Okay, it is just uh written out like.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order our regular open session meeting at five thirty P M. Madam Secretary can have a roll call, please.
Yes. Board President, Mr. Hannah?
Present. Yay, sorry.
President is good. Board Member, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior?
Absent.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams Wilford?
Present.
Board Member, Mrs. Griffin, absent.
Thank you. Pleasure of allegiance, can we please stand?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Next, we move to a moment of silence. At this point, I ask that you please place all cell phones on the vibrate. Thank you. Spotlight on success.
Good afternoon, board members, superintendent, community members, teachers, staff. We are so privileged to have our middle school students come and talk about student-led discovery in science. The teacher that will be speaking today is Dr. Gooch. He'll be introducing his students and they're gonna talk about all of the wonderful student-led activities that they have been doing in middle school. Thank you so much.
Good evening, good evening. Good evening, board members, administration, community members, staff, teachers. My name is Dr. Gooch and I have the pleasure of serving as the middle school science teacher here at Lindop School. It is truly an honor to be here this evening and to introduce some of my outstanding middle school students. While there are many exciting and engaging learning opportunities that take place in my classroom, tonight, we are highlighting one project in particular that truly reflects the spirit of student-driven learning, our student-led research project. In this project, students took ownership of their learning by selecting a scientific topic of interest, conducting in-depth research, and then presenting their findings to their classmates. From start to finish, the students were responsible for gathering credible information, synthesizing their learning, and creating, sharing, creatively sharing their knowledge with others. I strongly believe that when students are actively involved in the learning process, rather than just receiving information, they develop a deeper understanding of the material and build essential academic and life skills. These are the kinds of experiences that prepare them not only for high school and college, but also to future success in any path they choose. So without further ado, please join me in welcoming our students as they share their research journeys and what they learned through the empowering experience. Thank you and please enjoy the presentations.
Hi, my name is Maya and I am a seventh grade third student here at Lindop. I am proud to share my experience working on our student-led research project and science class. For my project, I chose to research energy pyramids and food webs. It was really interesting to learn how energy moves through the ecosystem and how different organisms depend on each other to survive. One thing I learned from this experience was how important it is to gather information from reliable sources and to really understand what you're talking about, not just copying past facts. It helped me become more confident in my research and thinking skills. My, this whole experience has laid a great foundation for me as I get ready for high school and beyond. Thank you for giving me the chance to share what I've learned.
Hi, my name is Josiah and I'm a middle school student here at Lindop. For our student-led research project and science class, I chose to focus on biomes, which are large areas of the earth that share similar climate, plants, and animals. Each biome, like the desert, rainforest, tundra, and grasslands, has its own unique ecosystem that supports different forms of life. I really enjoy having the opportunity to practice my presentation skills. Standing up in front of my classmates and sharing what I learned was a little nerve-wracking at first, but it helped me feel more confident speaking in front of others. Doing these projects helped me not only learn more about science, but also improve my research and public speaking skills. I'm proud of the work I did and thankful for the chance to share with you today. Thank you all for listening.
Hi, my name is Jada and I'm a middle school student here at Lindop. For our student-led science project, I chose to explore reaction time. My project focused on testing how quickly people react using different senses, touch, hearing, and sight. I conducted hands-on experiments with volunteers to see which sense had the fastest reaction time. I totally enjoy not only researching this topic, but also being able to experience it through real-life testing. It was exciting to under, to collect data, analyze the results, and see signs in action. This project helped me understand how the brain and body work together and how important quick reflexes can be in everyday life. It was fun and educational experience, and I'm grateful I had the chance to present what I learned. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jalisa and I am a student here at Lindop. For our student-led science project, I chose to focus on ecosystems. Ecosystems are communities of living organisms interacting with their environment, like plants, animals, water, and soil, all working together to survive and thrive. This experience taught me the value of not only gathering information for myself, but also learning how to present it in a way that helps others understand. I realized that explaining something clearly so that my classmates could grasp, it was just as important as understanding it myself. I now understand that teaching is truly an art and it takes thoughtfulness and creativity. As we close our Spotlight on Success presentation, I wanna say that this was one of the most engaging and meaningful activities we've done. We were able to collaborate, share ideas, and grow together as learners. Thank you for your time and for allowing us to share our journey with you tonight. Thank you.
Well, I'll start it off. Good job, guys. Dr. Gooch, thank you for everything that you're doing with our students. I see that they really have fun in your classroom and doing what they're doing, so I really appreciate it. Any other board members have anything to say to our students?
Great job overall. Great job. Keep up the good work.
I commend you all. I wish I had these opportunities when I was in school to do some uh research such as you all. You're on your way to uh great achievements. Thank you very much for sharing.
Well done.
Good job. Thank you, guys. All right, before we move on, um if parents and students, if you guys are exiting the gym room, this would be the time. If not, we'll keep the meeting moving. All right, next we have item F, public comment. Before we get started, we are now at the public, the public participation section of our agenda. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Please remember that public comments are governed by Board Policy two-two-thirty, which limits each individual to a maximum of three minutes and requires that every participant conduct themselves with civility and respect. In most cases, if there are questions to the board, the board will refer those questions to the district administration team for follow-up. We ask that everyone respect these rules so that all interested participants may have the opportunity to address the board so that the board will have significant time to conduct the business, excuse me, as scheduled on the meeting agenda. Anyone who wishes to participate will be asked to identify themselves for our records and proceed in compliance with the guidelines. I have three, Ms. Holland, Mr. Patterson, Ms. Gillespie, you may come in that order.
Good evening, Board President and Board Members in the community. Um, I came and spoke um last month, so I'm just following up on that. Uh, cause last month I had requested a rationale regarding the increases for the employees and accommodations. And so again, this is not about individual people, this is about positions. And just the community is just asking for transparency and clarity. Again, this might be warranted, but we have not been provided any information about what's going on outside of being told, you're gonna be told what's going on once we finish everything. And so it seems like things are finished and that you guys are making moves based on that, but we still don't know. And so that is helpful to us. And there also is this standard, because now we've gone from even less transparency, because we went from numbers before, to it's just saying bonuses, but we don't know what those are. Are those standard numbers for people who have um had to step up in the past? We've had people have to step into other positions to be helpful, so that helps the community know what's going on. Um, I also wanted to mention that last month and the month before that, there were long conversations about the board um deals. And so to me, it's a little concerning that there's only one person kinda asking questions about that. Financials are key, and so people should have enough time. And we're a one-building school district, so I think we can probably figure out a way and talk to other school districts about how they do it. I know many of them do it electronically, so then this won't be an issue and it keeps coming up. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I just had a couple of quick questions uh listed in uh new business. Uh, item K, number one, the ten thousand dollars to Juneteenth celebration. My question is, why are we pulling from our education fund to support a village sponsor celebration? Um, this is concerning because in the previous board meeting, there was a cry for help from our school principal about our test scores. Um, these funds should be used, in my opinion, um for extra tutoring in math, incentivizing our teachers for doing extra to help our students improve. Um, also, um, the current village, village president, you know, boasted about the village surplus. Um, that's not actually listed on our website, but uh if there truly is a surplus, uh, why is the village asking us to pull from um a struggling school to keep staff? We're struggling with instruction. Um, we're also struggling to um find, to fund a village-sponsored event. Uh, if we really have those resources and we have a surplus at the village level, I don't know why would we be pulling ten thousand dollars out of our education fund. Um, this is not a good leadership choice to even ask the school in its current state for any financial help. Uh, also, uh, an item two, the fifteen hundred to answer, Inc. Um, this program is not listed in Broadview, it's listed in Hillside. Um, how would this help our students at Lindop? Um, the mayor also sat on his board in the past uh for this program. And I'm wondering if this is, and this is just a question, not a fact, is it a political favor or for this person? Or is this gonna be for the betterment of our children? Uh, politics um shouldn't be on the agenda uh concerning our kids. Politics have no place here. I've said that in the past. Um, and also, I wanna know that we uh vet the founder, uh was she background checked? Uh, we should uh learn from the Little Dirk situation to not just let any uh program come here because they're guarded under a five-oh-one C. We don't need them to come before our children if they're not vetted properly. But lastly, in new business, item P, um the bonus um for the Assistant Superintendent and Board Secretary, why is this back on the agenda disguised as a bonus? Uh, also, in a previous board meeting, multiple parents voiced their concerns about this, and I see it fell on deaf ears. The parents don't agree with the, with these bonuses and raises, cause there's no transparency, as the last parent stated. Uh, parents still are in the dark about what went on with Dr. Jackson. We still never got, there was FOIA requests submitted, nobody answered what exactly happened with our superintendent, so thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Carissa Gillespie. I'm a teacher uh in the township and I'm a taxpayer in Broadview. Um, I just want us as a community to make sure that our educational funds are being used for our students. Um, I am bothered by the lack of transparency in the performance bonuses being discussed again tonight. Since around October, November, we've been kinda left in the dark about the absence of our superintendent, other key staff and teachers in the district. This is not personal, but it becomes personal when it affects my tax dollars and my children's education. Transparency and communication combats rumors and chaos. Um, I wanna thank the teachers. I know that your job is greatly needed, especially in these times, and I know a lot of times it can be underappreciated. I hope that as a board, um, we could be creative in finding and funding teachers. Um, this next part is personal. My child um has been at Lindop since kindergarten and she has never scored as low as she has on standardized tests as she has this year. Um, I take responsibility for that as well, but I also know that as a teacher, thirty-three students, um, no matter how creative the teachers can be, it's thirty-three students in a class and that's too much. My hope is that in the future, uh, future fifth graders don't have to have these struggles and go back to the smaller classes. I know that being on a board is hard, but we need to make sure that moving forward and we have new members coming in, that we take the personal out of it and make it truly about my kids, your kids, and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board President. So will, um, Dr. Jackson, will you be responding to each one of those comments?
Yes.
Thank you. And I guess, since it sounds like maybe last month, people uh comments weren't, they didn't receive a response. Maybe we can look back and see about those, so we can let people know we value what they have to say and respond accordingly. Thank you.
All right. Next, item G, FOIA requests, uh, Dr. J.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being with us uh tonight. Just an example of some of the great things that are happening, uh, Dr. Gooch um is a new teacher uh to Lindop, but he comes with uh several years of experience um and has done an amazing job with reigniting uh their love for science. So thank you so much, uh, Dr. Gooch, and thank you for our children uh that have come up. So for our FOIA, for our FOIAs that came through, so we have one from Althea, uh, from Broadview. And she wanted to know about the staff that the uh staff, that the staff members did not receive any salary increases this year. But if you're related to the board members, you got large raises or run for the Board of Education and endorsed by the mayor, and mom works at Lindop, you get a raise, please email me a spreadsheet, uh, that FOIA response has been satisfied. Next FOIA.
When you say satisfied, that meant that all the material that she requested, she received?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Next FOIA, uh, from Kayla Love. Kayla Love um is asking about our Pitney Bowls uh software. Many companies do ask these questions as they are looking um for prices and uh how to be more competitive. That has been satisfied. We have another FOIA from Mrs. Althea. And um it talks about going through a lot of board meetings, minutes, and videos. And while did, uh, they find corruption, angry that board member Griffin used her role as a board member to get her family jobs and worse, she was the chairman of the negotiations committee, where she was supposed to be representing taxpayers of Lindop School District ninety-two and negotiating union salaries. Um, I heard they handwrite notes during the board meetings when they vote on items. Please provide the following information, full name of the custodian, getting paid eleven ninety-one per hour, approved on July seventeen, two thousand eighteen, District ninety-two board meeting by Ms. Dempsey, Mr. Morris, Ms. Joyner-Herit, Ms. Arrington, Ms. Griffin. The Board of Education seems to list every other higher name except the custodian on the minutes. This is not transparent. Any documentation to support the hiring of the custodian on July seventeen, two thousand eighteen with full name, Sir Ron Edwards Senior, hire date and board minutes showing he was approved by the Board of Education with starting salary. Sir Ron Edwards Senior total percent increase from starting hourly wages to current wages. It should be over one hundred percent if custodians make twenty dollars per hour and eleven ninety-one was the rate back in two thousand eighteen. Minutes and handwritten notes of the Board of Education voted on items from the September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, Board of Education meeting emailed so it can be preserved for ethics violations. Board minutes state Cheryl Griffin seconded the motion and voted on the L S S A contract. There was a conflict of interest because she then gave the father of her grandson a large pay increase. For the record, board minutes from the Sept- September eighteen, two thousand eighteen meeting also show Cheryl Griffin on the negotiations committee when Cheryl Griffin voted on a contract that benefited her family. List of L S S A members as of September eighteen, two thousand eighteen. Any notes from the negotiations committee on August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, where Cheryl Griffin was a committee chairman and negotiated a contract? Audio emailed from the September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one board meeting, so it is preserved for ethics violations. Any notes documenting voting for this meeting where Cheryl Griffin made the motion to approve the L S S A contract and voted to approve it? List of L S S A members as of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Minutes and handwritten notes of the board, when the Board of Education voted on items from the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, board meeting emailed so it can be preserved for ethics violations. Board minutes state Cheryl Griffin seconded the motion and voted to hire a family member. Video emailed from the, emailed from the special Lindop ninety-two board meeting, August twenty-three, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting, when Cheryl Griffin hires a family member, so it can be preserved for ethics violations. This can be low quality. The meeting video, Cheryl Griffin also votes on a L S S A contract amendment benefiting her son's father. Minutes and handwritten notes, when the Board of Education voted on items from the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, Board of Board meeting emailed so it can be preserved for ethics violations. The agenda and minutes also show Cheryl Griffin was on the negotiations committee when Cheryl Griffin voted on a contract that benefited her family. List of L S S A members as of August twenty-three, twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And the conclusion on Board Book and YouTube, it seems like Sir Ron Edwards Senior started at around eleven ninety-one per hour in two thousand eighteen, then seven years later has received over one hundred percent increase per hour thanks to his son's grandma, Cheryl Griffin, a board member negotiating his salary on behalf of taxpayers, and Cheryl Griffin voted approved, voted approved it three times. Yours truly, Althea. We have uh collected all information and our attorneys have that, and the FOIA will be responded to as soon as they are finished reviewing the information. Uh, one more, Althea, A. Althea. To Lindop greetings, please provide all legal fees of any defending Cheryl Griffin's ethic complaints from my April tenth FOIA titled FOIA Ethics, Lindop ninety-two taxpayers shouldn't pay for stupidness. They just, for, for stupidness. Okay, yours, you're truly Althea. Our attorneys have that as well, all of that information, and that will be uh forthcoming.
All right, thank you. Item H, upcoming events and correspondence. We ask that you read those upcoming events on your own, and I have no correspondence.
You know what? I just wanna talk about this first one. If any of you are able to come out on April sixteenth, uh, Lindop is leading the way with this. We will have an embracing voices, celebrating stories, and Lindop's diverse authors book fair. Um, as a building uh principal, when I was, what I noticed that we would have inter-scholastic or scholastic book fairs, but we would never have books that looked like our children and were authored by people who looked like them. And so I had a meeting uh with Mrs. Obasi, with Mrs. Layton, also met with the building principal and assistant principal and talked about how we might do something differently that would allow our students to see people who represent and look like them. So this will be our very first, it is April sixteenth, four P M to seven thirty P M, right here in the Lindop Gymnasium. Please come out and support. Thank you. Our first African-American book fair. No, never.
That's tomorrow, April sixteenth, from four to seven thirty. Thank you. Okay, next, consent agenda. Um, I make a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the Lindop District ninety-two account payable for February twelfth, twenty twenty-five through March twelfth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents as presented. Can I have a second?
Brian Dawson, a second?
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, can we remove these consent agenda items? So consent agenda item number one, two, three, four, five. So one through five, and so you added number seven. And I'm sorry, you said that so fast. What are we adding to this one?
It's in front of you.
It's on here?
Yes, the motion is right here.
Oh, it's in the motion. Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay, so then that's number seven. And number six and seven, can, number seven, to be, so only six to stay in the consent agenda.
Okay, so we have to address the first motion that was there before we move to your next ones.
It's, mine's is not a motion, it's asking that those people.
Just procedurally, I think first you just need to have an agreement or a vote on adding this number seven. Then we can address, what essentially is gonna happen is you're gonna vote on, try to move it. Right, but all you're doing first is the motion and the second on the table is to add number seven.
Okay. So Mr. Dawson seconded that, so we'll go ahead and do the roll call. Board President, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Steven Taylor?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams Wilford?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent. Board Member, Mrs. Griffin, absent.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so recommend approval for regular open session meeting minutes for Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a second?
Brian Dawson, a second?
Any discussion? There are none. Roll call, please.
Motion is for the?
Just for number one.
Okay.
I gotta do them separately.
That's fine. So Board President, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams Wilford?
Absent.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent and Board Member, Board Secretary and Ms. Griffin, absent.
Thank you, motion carries. Recommend approval of the regular closed session meeting minutes for Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, can I have a second please?
Second, Brian Dawson.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, Mr. Taylor. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wilford.
Absent.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent, Board Member, Board Secretary and Ms. Griffin, absent as well.
Thank you, their motion carries. Recommend approval for Lindop District ninety-two account payable from March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five through April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of six hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Have a second please.
Board Member Buchanan, second.
Any discussion? There are none, roll call please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Member, Mr. Stephen Taylor. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wilford. Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent, Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin, absent as well.
Thank you, their motion carries. Recommend approval for Lindop District ninety-two account reconciliation for March twenty twenty-five, can I have a second?
Brian Dawson, I second.
Any discussion? There are none, roll call please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Member, Mr. Taylor. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wilford. Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent and Board Member or Secretary, Ms. Griffin, absent as well.
Thank you, motion carries. Recommend approval for Lindop District ninety-two payroll from March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five through April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety cents. Can I have a second please?
Board Member Taylor, yeah.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Member, Mr. Taylor. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wilford. Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent as well as Board Member or Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin, absent as well.
Thank you, motion carries. Item six, recommend approval to change review dates on policies for sixty, four one ninety and five, five thirty-five as presented, can I have a second?
A second, Board Member Williams-Wilford.
Thank you, any discussion?
Dr. Jackson, the review dates changed on this one, is something we should know about this one?
The review dates on the policies are only for, so when we go over them in the policy meeting. The review date changed to the up, changes to the updated, the last day of the time that you all had the policy meeting.
Oh, we're not changing the, changing from a previous review date, that's what I want, okay, all right, I'm fine.
Okay, no problem.
Our lines are clear? Roll call please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Member, Mr. Taylor. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wilford. Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent and Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin, absent as well.
Thank you, their motion carries as well. Next we have old business. What, where's, y'all got seven of y'all's?
That's the one you just made.
The original one he read, correct?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, correct?
Item number seven.
I don't have a seven. Oh, she want me, okay, okay, okay. All right. So I make the motion to amend, no, to approve, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda to.
Approve Lindop District ninety-two.
It's the payroll. So I make the motion to approve the payroll for February twelfth, right? Or you want me to do the accounts payable? Yeah, that's all I got. Okay, so we won't be acting on item seven. Okay? So we're good. No, four. Everything good? Okay. All right. So we won't be, we won't make a move on item seven tonight. All right. Safe to move to item J. Good? Okay, item J, State of the District. Dr. Betts, Ms. Opari Sepuro, Dr. Roberson, Ms. Pachazik and Mr. Ballantyne.
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration, Staff and Community. We want to talk to you about some upcoming items with instruction in the state of the districts tonight. So one of the really fun things that's going on in the state is that they have approved a comprehensive literacy plan. For grades pre-K through twelve. Here at Lindop locally, we have pre-K through eight, as you know, and so we have been given an allocation of funds to pay teachers to do extra duty. To help us implement this plan. And so we're really excited to have that opportunity. And one of the things that we'll be looking at is how the state is prioritizing literacy. And that literacy is the gateway to understanding all other content areas. So we actually have a lot of literacy values at Lindop and you can see evidence of that in our classrooms and when you walk through our hallways. But one of the things that the state has provided is an outline of their guiding values for the comprehensive literacy plan. For example, every learner has the right to read. And those are things that we've been talking about at Lindop for a very long time. But moving on, we have three goals that we'll be focusing on. So the state has asked for local districts to ensure that they have a framework for effective, evidence-based literacy instruction. We are there, we just need to formalize some things and get them in place for the state. Their second goal is that our educators have professional learning and development and they're not just talking about our reading teachers and our social studies teachers. But also our science teachers, our math teachers, specials teachers, all of the people who serve our students. Will be given professional development through this new literacy plan. And the third thing is effective literacy leadership, so how is it that we're thinking about literacy? And that we're moving it forward at each grade level band and then also with our building leadership and our district leadership and our Board of Education as well. So we're looking forward to that opportunity, we've had a lot of teachers volunteer to be on that implementation team. But I want to switch over to talk to you about summer school and we want to let you know what plans we're working on this year. So we will be having our traditional summer school, which runs in June for four weeks. We are adding four extra days, we typically go Monday through Thursday, but we're adding Friday for this year because we do need it. And then we will also have our Broadview Freedom School, which will run from June eleventh to July twenty-fifth. So you'll see that the regular summer school begins on June second. The reason for the difference in start dates is that the Freedom School, which is a partnership with the Children's Defense Fund. Requires training that takes place in Knoxville, Tennessee for those teachers at that, at that time in June. And so for the traditional summer school, we're targeting that June timeline, but for the Freedom School, we can't start until we've completed that training. You'll see the, the teacher hours and the student hours, so students in the, in the traditional summer school will be on campus Monday through Friday, eight to one. Up until the end of June, June thirtieth. And then our Freedom School scholars will be on campus eight to three, Monday through Friday, from June eleventh through July twenty-fifth. And the holidays are listed there as well. We project that we'll need eight teachers and three paraprofessionals for the traditional summer school. And we project we'll need six teachers known as servant leader interns or S L Is for the Freedom School. And six paraprofessionals or junior S L Is for the Freedom School. We also typically have a floating S L I because sometimes we just need to place an extra person in a room with the Freedom School. So we will have that, we had two last year, we'll have one this year. We will share one social worker between programs. And we are targeting a total student capacity of one hundred and fifty children on campus this summer to serve for summer school. We have a projected staffing cost, we're projecting sixty thousand dollars for the traditional summer school. And a projection of one hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred for the Freedom School. It does run longer, it has longer hours and it has a longer timeline. I do want to point out that we have received more Freedom School dollars, they've been allocated to us. So as other programs are not using theirs around the state, because we have been using ours, we've been receiving a little bit more here and there. So we just got a new allocation of forty-two thousand. And so if you subtract that from that one seventy-six thousand, four hundred for Freedom School, you'll get. A total for Freedom School of one hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred. Our total for summer programming for staffing cost would be one hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred. Going directly to our teachers and paraprofessionals for summer school staffing. And I'm going to give it to Mrs. Opari Sepuro to talk to you about attendance.
I have a question.
I see we're very ambitious about our numbers for students, one hundred and fifty, is that similar to what we had last year?
It's actually a little bit more. We were almost fully filled with Freedom School, we have two places left. But we have anticipation that those permission forms are coming, we also have a waiting list for Freedom School. And then we're working on filling those positions for the traditional summer school as well. And I know that Mrs. Opari Sepuro has been diligent in getting those numbers up, so we do expect to be full this summer.
So if I heard you correctly, we have one hundred and forty-eight parents that have committed thus far for summer school?
They might be families, so there might be like one parent sharing multiple students, one hundred and fifty. We're, we're, we're on track to meet that number, that's our projection.
And my other question is, is the teacher paid for, I'll call it regular summer school? And Freedom School, is it and the paraprofessionals, is the pay the same? Or is there a difference in hourly wage, hourly wages from one program, summer school to the other?
The programs are paid at the same rate, so teachers in either program make the same rate. One program does have more hours, so, yeah.
And you know what, just before you begin, Mrs. Opari Sepuro, I'd just like to publicly thank the Board of Education. We are the only school in Illinois where our board has voted to pay for Freedom School. Even if the funding is not there from the state and so thank you very, very much because you all are the only ones in the state of Illinois, thank you.
All right, good evening, Board Members, Superintendent, Teachers, Staff, thank you so much for being here. Because we are a community and we all work together, attendance. So I need to let you know that in February, we had forty-five students that were chronically absent. In March, thirty-six students, so we were able to get nine students off the chronically absent list. And that's working together as a community, each and every one of us made a contribution to that goal, so thank you, thank you, everyone. Especially the teachers, making sure that the students are here, the front office, making sure that those calls are made when students are not in class. The calls are made immediately to find out why the students are not here. So congratulations, Lindop School. When it comes to truancy, we currently have twenty-nine students that are considered truant, that is nine percent. When it comes to chronically absent, like I stated, thirty-six students, which is twelve percent. In terms of McKenney-Vento, we have two students who are McKenney-Vento students that are also chronically absent. In terms of males and females, we have twenty males and sixteen females that are chronically absent. If you look at ethnicity, in terms of chronically absent, we have eight percent that are African-American, three percent Hispanic. Two or more races, one percent and zero percent for white. Moving right along, when it comes to students with individualized educational plans, we have four students with individualized educational plans. That are also considered chronically absent, zero students in terms of having a five oh four plan. Terms of low income, we have thirty-two students that are considered low income and are chronically absent. In terms of multilingual learners, we have three students that are multilingual learners that are also considered chronically absent. All right, so when it comes to grade levels, when you look at this, you will see that first grade and fourth grade only have one student that's chronically absent. Fifth grade continues to go on, zero students that are chronically absent, zero students. So congratulations to fifth grade in terms of making sure that their students are here each and every day. Again, we're doing the same things in terms of calling parents, making sure and waking up parents to make sure even picking up your child on time. Making sure that everyone knows about our attendance, the attendance hotline, making sure that they're calling to reduce the number of unexcused absences. Any questions regarding attendance?
Great job.
Thank you.
No questions, but good job.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Pachazik, Special Services.
Good evening, Board Members, Community Members, Staff and Students. In Special Services, we are busy working on completing the last of for our eighth graders high school transition meetings. I S A testing has been in place, we'll be completing that, summer school planning. Working with the building leadership at an administrative team, making sure students are being supported. M T S S support and planning has taken place where new into intervention groups have been established. Support teams are providing directions for students, anytime something comes up about a student, we make sure we are collaborating. Planning for a new intervention curriculum that's, we'll be talking about and completing. The last quarter meetings for individual education plans, for annual reviews, reevaluation meetings and five oh four meetings. And now for pre-K, this is the adventures of pre-K, March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day. As you notice the video, we are finding things in the classroom, that's the topic. What happened? Look at all this stuff.
It wasn't mazinga.
Look at, oh no.
Who is green? Who is green?
The Grinch?
The Grinch is green, but who else is green and comes on March seventeenth? He's a little guy. Footprints, are those big footprints or little footprints?
Erin, what happened? You, I know you could laugh at this video, but being there was the best because a student kept saying, we have to call security. We did call security. Mr. Kasek was summoning down to pre-K, so they could explain why we need more security because the leprechauns came through their room. And the young lady kept stating, we need security, that was the quoted quote, so it, it was an amazing day down in pre-K land because it was green everywhere. down in pre-K land because it was green everywhere. So these are some of the pictures in regards to St. Patrick's Day adventure, some of the activities that they participated in. That completes my report. Any questions?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Valentine, Bill Dutton Brown.
Good evening, Board Education, community and staff. Just wanted to update you on some projects we did around campus on the spring break. Brought out all our sanitizing equipment. We did deep cleaning all the restrooms inside the facility. We did classroom floor care. We also did floor care inside the hallways. We stripped down a coat of wax and applied a new finish throughout the hallways, throughout the campus. We replaced air filters throughout the campus, inside the classrooms, and also inside the main air handlers, which we have four air handlers inside the building. We had our fire alarm system inspected, fire extinguishers inspected, and sprinkler and suppression system inspected. Everything is in operational condition. Any questions?
Thank you. All righty, thank you.
Thank all of you. You've done such great work.
Okay, new business. I make a motion to approve the Lindup ninety-two donation for the Juneteenth, Friday, June twentieth, Saturday, June twenty-first, Sunday, June twenty-second celebration in the amount of ten thousand dollars to be paid from the educational fund. Board community event as presented. Can I get a second?
Wait, which dates is it? The one on the screen or the one on the paper?
Okay.
Okay, Hannah, I second it. Before we roll call, any discussion?
Good evening, Board members, superintendent, teachers, staff, community members. I am excited to talk about Broadview's Juneteenth celebration. Please save the date. It is June twentieth, June twenty-first, and June twenty-second. Some of the fantastic activities that will be happening that weekend. First of all, it is Broadview's one hundred tenth birthday. And so that first day, we'll be celebrating that one hundred ten years. That's amazing. So that weekend will kick off with a birthday party, and that is from four o'clock to eleven o'clock that night. On Saturday, June twenty-first, the theme is the Year of the Return, celebrating African-Americans and labor. It's going to be a fabulous event with special surprises for the community, and that would be at twelve o'clock to ten o'clock PM. Music will be infused throughout the whole weekend, food, family games, fun times. And then last but not least, Broadview know how to end a party in the right way. And so Sunday, June twenty-second, from twelve o'clock to nine o'clock, there will be the big finale, and that will be a fabulous time. Please do not miss out. In contribution for this event to occur, the community entities are coming together to spawn, help to add to the donation by adding ten thousand dollars as well as having volunteers to help with the event. It is a community event. It takes everybody to come together to help. One of the things that Lindup is doing and contributing to this event, Broadview is having a cookbook in which they will be having, getting community members to add their recipes to this cookbook. They will be putting it together and making a book. So if members in the community want to share that recipe for a cake or a brisket recipe, that's all going to come together, and our fabulous students as well as other students in the Broadview area are able to contribute to this by making the picture that will be on this book, celebrating one hundred ten years in Broadview. We will be having a art showcase in which is the event on June twenty-second from nine o'clock to ten o'clock AM. We're inviting all of the community members to come, and you can vote on the art project. Last year, we had a fabulous time. Please come by, and you may help to vote on your favorite art project to be on this cookbook. Thank you so much.
And that's April twenty-second, not June twenty-second.
Yes, I'm thinking of June. Thank you so much. It is April twenty-second, so it's coming up from nine to ten o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also have another gem that we found, and we would like to have that for everyone to be able to see. But we have the actual board meeting minutes from nineteen thirty-eight that we found. And so to be able to look at that and to peruse that, and all of the minutes were handwritten. And I think someone was paid ten dollars or something like that to, to complete and do some work in the building. But just an amazing thing to see in a wonderful part of history. So that will also be on display.
All right, thank you. Anything else? There are none. Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yay.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfer.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Motion, I make a motion to approve Lindup ninety-two donation to the Anna Serenkin, amount of one thousand five hundred dollars as presented.
Have a second, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Good evening, Board Member Superintendent. The Seventeenth Annual Autism Developmental Disabilities Walkathon is at Proviso West Fieldhouse, and it is on the twenty-sixth. On the twenty-sixth. And the Lindup team has participated in years past in regard to getting the team to get out and walk. It is different activities that will be provided, and it is a fifth, we are asked for the fifteen hundred donation to sponsor for the event. At the event, they do give away things for students to go to an autism camp, horseback riding, and things of that nature. It's part of some of the giveaways that will be done at the Walkathon.
And the fifteen hundred was specifically chosen because we have children
who participate that are on the spectrum and can participate in the activities that they do support.
I will say, as a parent of a child that has autism, the first one, to attend Lindup School to be fully included, he's now thirty-one, I, back then, Deborah and I were, have boots on the ground trying to get our kids included in the Park District, in the school system, not across town, in a different school setting. And it took me two years of advocating to get my son here. It wasn't an easy journey. So it's things like this that has helped families. They typically have resource fears and things of that nature there. And it's good to have a community of other families that's going through the same struggles as you are. It's different when you're genning a kid than when you have, you're on the spectrum. So I found it beneficial. And if anybody know me, I'm all about children and definitely children with special needs. So this is one of the reasons why I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We have none. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfer.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Board Member Buchanan, I make a motion to approve the purchase Wilson Reading System at a cost of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents as presented.
Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any discussion?
Their presentation?
I believe so.
Yes, it is. I apologize. Mr. Alice was assisting as well. Thank you. The Wilson Language Training Reading System, this is a system we have researched in regards to providing a three, three, a third tier intervention, what our intervention is as well as our special education teachers. Now, part of the program is provide intensive instruction with highly skilled teachers and small groups or individual reading and spelling success to achieve. This program has been around for three decades. It targets grades two through twelfth, and it helps close that gap. And how the system is set up, the three intervention teachers will receive a level one certification training. That is a year-long training that they have committed to participating in, to be level one certified. Five other teachers will receive introductory course training, so they can also give the support as well. So we can do online training for them and that support by providing those tier-three intervention for our students.
Thank you. Any more members?
Thank you.
This is different from the one we, Dr. Best brought to us in January, I think, when we spoke about it.
That was Wonders. That was the highlight.
Oh, okay. And so now we're doing the full purchase, correct? Okay, I just want to make sure. All right.
Our lines are clear?
I'm sorry. Well, let's just be for spare teachers using this as an intervention or genning it as well.
This, this, the initial teachers that will be pulling out will be the three intervention teachers and the special education teachers. So that is covering to close the gap, to make our students stronger readers. Because it's very intensive, it's very structured, so it has to be done at certain, how many times, how many minutes per week, everything to move the students.
Thank you. All right. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yay.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfer.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, Brian Dawson, I make a motion to approve the Lindup School District Ninety-two Public School Calendar for school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Hannah, a second.
Okay, so as usual, the board's request may is to make sure that we align with Proviso Township District Two oh nine to make sure that older siblings are available for their younger siblings. We have spoken with Proviso Township Two oh nine, Alex Ashkoff, as well as Superintendent Mohib. And everything is in alignment, and we are presenting this for approval tonight.
Thank you.
I do have a one thing. It was brought to my attention just recently that our rest of the calendar is fine, but the graduation date is actually on the same date as I think two other schools, but not the public schools, two private schools in the area. I think it's Fenwick and Trinity. And so I know we have a student that we have different students here, so we might want to just look at that. That's the only thing I would, we can approve this, of course, but just maybe look back at that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
One other question. I know there was questions at one point, and I'm not sure if this is still a concern for parents, but how we do our professional development with staff, what is it, every Wednesday they get out at two or one day of the week or whatever? Is that going to be?
That is also still here on this calendar. Yes, that has not changed. So no changes.
And is it not a problem anymore with families?
I have not heard any of any problems. They have not been expressed to me. We thought that we would have more when we initially began this, but there has not been any. We had initially thought that maybe parents would have an issue picking up their children or with child arrangements. Arrangements, yeah, child arrangements for so early, but that has not been the case. We have not had any children waiting at all. But I'd like to defer this to the building if there, if anything has changed. Okay, thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah.
Board Member, Ms. Williams-Wolfer.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Thank you. Motion carries.
I'm sorry, one last question. If we change the graduation date because of the conflict with the private schools, will the calendar come back before us or?
It will come back, but let's see how many. I like to speak to the building and see how many children would be impacted with that. And if anything, with the date versus the time.
The time.
Would be impacted.
Yeah, so it might just be changing it by an hour or something like that.
And that, that's to affect this year's graduation.
No, 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 no. This is for next year. This is the one we brought. So, yeah, we good next month.
Good.
Board Member Williams-Wolfer, I make a motion to approve changing Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the regular open and closed session meeting to Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five at five thirty PM due to the CAPS fee, a conference conflict with the presented dates.
I second Hannah. Discussion. There any? There are none? Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Ms. Williams-Wolfer.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, as we move along to Board President's report, just want to say thank you to the Lindup community as this board has just returned from professional development of our own. Thank you for allowing us to go do that, to bring back information to Lindup so that our students can be successful and keep in the fight with the students around the United States. So thank you so much for that. Any board members that's here that would like to talk about conference, this is the time. Go back to that, Josh. Board photo day, Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, four fifteen to five twenty-five. Board members, please remember, we are taking pictures that day, so put your Sunday's best on.
So now we're talking about the conference?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm Yeah.
All right.
Don't forget, it's time to file. Board members, you need to file for your SEI. Do not forget that. Deadline is May first, twenty twenty-five. We definitely do not want to be penalized, so make sure you get that handled. And then, back to conference. Anybody want to talk about it?
I'll go last because I, I got
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
I didn't see him.
With that being my first, I thought that was amazing because the only ones I'm being kind of used to were Park District conferences. So to see it in a new light was kind of entertaining. I like looking forward to it again.
Thank you. Mr. Dawson, before you go, I got to give a big shout out to the Lindup team that went and presented at CASP. You guys did an amazing job to get up and discuss what goes on here at Lindup specifically for Freedom School on a national level and to hear what people had to say in response to what we do at Freedom School. Made us feel good to be Lindup strong. So thank you guys so much for that. Mr. Dawson, I turn it over to you.
Or anybody else got something? So I got a couple here.
Well, I would like to say that I was not able to go to the AI training, but I was able to meet up with the facilitator later on. And I use AI extensively with a number of things. And we were talking about how that has given the majority of students at other schools a big heads up because there have been so many other schools that have been doing this for like a couple of years now. And we're still just getting into it. So it's great to try to bring our students up to par with the others.
Okay, I'm gonna tag team on, um, what, what Member Griffin said, because I was able to make that the Saturday session with, uh, Mr. Ravi Huth Singh. He's, uh, the speaker. And he was speaking on AI and just a couple of facts. He says that AI will amount for forty percent of today's jobs being replaced in the next thirty years. He said that sixty-five percent of the kids today will more than likely have a job that has not been invented yet in their adulthood. And what's so crucial about that is because obviously we're talking about STEM. We're talking about science, technology, engineering and math. And so, you know, when we look at Lindop and we see, you know, okay, we really wanna drill down on math, it's, it's crucial because our children will not be able to compete. You know, if you wait until they get to, to college to really instill that in them. Not that everybody's gonna have a, a STEM job. I mean, there'll still be people out there who are, you know, um, you know, artists or nursing, but every industry, he's saying, will be impacted by AI. And so that's something that, you know, I, I looked at it as being crucial and I wanted to come back with that. That same individual that, uh, Ms. Griffin met with, he has a, and I think this may have happened at Lindop before. He has a group called Ravi Unites Schools, where he actually unites children around the world and they do kinda like Zoom calls where, uh, a child in, let's say Lindop, they'll get online and they'll meet a classroom in Tokyo or they'll meet a classroom in Mumbai or Paris or, you know, somewhere in, let's say Sydney, Australia. And the kids can just speak on Zoom and actually, you know, talk about the different things in their culture, but obviously unite them as, you know, children and say, okay, well, this is what's going on in our country. And it really kinda gives the, the kids a tie-in to social studies that, yes, you read the book and you see how, you know, different we are, but then you go and you look and you see these kids from around the world and they're studying the same subjects and have the same complaints about their teacher or the lunchroom food or whatever. And so I thought that was fantastic. I'm waiting for them to send me information so I can send it to the district, because I think it would be cool for us to ha- have, you know, our, our children doing that. Um, but I, I was also in a class and I wanted to, to bring this up to the board and the community also. It's called Governance in a New Era of Public Education. And, um, because we're board members, you know, we are apolitical. We don't, you know, do Democrat, Republican, Independent, Libertarian or whatever. But I sat in on this and not only did people speak in the session, people stayed afterwards and we started talking. And they were talking about how things are changing at the federal level. The, you know, um, in Washington and how things are trickling down and going to change. Not today, not tomorrow, but it's coming. And one of the big things that they talked about was federal finances. How we all know that even in the state of Illinois, people start robbing Peter to pay Paul, and one of the first groups they usually come after is education budgets. They start slashing education budgets. So even if we don't think it's that big of a deal because of federal dollars that we're getting, we have to also understand that if federal dollars dry up for Illinois, then they're gonna start moving money around to see what can we cut so that we can handle these pensions? What can we do so we can have more infrastructure money? What can we do? And unfortunately, everybody, there are people who have been board members thirty, forty years and they were saying, you know, they're gonna come after the education budgets. And so everyone's saying it's time to start, you know, thinking down the road, tightening the budget because you don't know how. And this is, like I said, this is apolitical. This isn't one side or another. This is, as you can see, if people start talking about efficiencies and things like that, they're saying, don't think that you're gonna have as much money as you have. That COVID money that we used to get, we won't be getting that type of thing anymore. And we might not be able to apply for as many grants as we used to get, because certain people wanna tighten the, 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 the belts. So we'll definitely have to, uh, start thinking about that. We're, Lindop sits in a really good situation because we have a healthy fund balance. There are schools that are, I sit on the PACE board and we are month to month, you know. Uh, but Lindop has a healthy fund balance, but this is something that's coming down the road that is important that the board and the community know. You know, the finances we have today might not be the finances we have next year, might not be the finances we have two years from now if they're cutting things. And lastly, um, Dr. Jackson and to follow up on, um, the president's point, uh, Dr. Jackson, Dr. Betts and, um, Teacher Mr. Jones did a phenomenal job with Freedom School. And there wasn't the same turnout that it should have been, that I sat, sat in on other classes and they had large groups of people come, but when people saw the, the subject matter, I think some people shied away. We do a phenomenal job of uplifting our children in this community and giving them resources and helping them to feel supported. And I wanna make sure that regardless, we continue to do that, regardless, even if it's not appreciated, if people, um, like this isn't something that we should shy away from, you know, and that if we're gonna, you know, that's money well spent, is what I'm saying. Regardless, no matter what happens, let's make sure we keep pouring that to our children. And, uh, regardless of what's coming down the road, let's just, uh, put that hedge of protection around them and make sure we're doing what's right for us. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If I can pivot on what he's saying in terms of, um, the financing, like I said, I didn't go to the conference. However, as we sit here today, there's a House bill and Senate bill on the floor being negotiated. Already in preschool, you cannot expel or suspend a student. They're talking about expanding that through, um, K through, um, I think, second grade in addition to no outplacements, mm-hmm, for K through second grade. And so if we have more children that our current staff feel like this is not a good fit for them, but the state make a policy that we cannot outplace them, we can't send them to PACE, we can't send them to other programs. So then you gotta pay for staff to have the skill sets and the individuals that's needed to be able to support the staff, the child in this learning environment if this passes. There's a heavy advocacy group, um, that's in support of it too, who's been known to get stuff passed. So we need to make sure we're paying attention to what's going on, not just at the federal level, but at the state level as well, cause that would be a big shift for us, you know, for Lindop families. Um, we're not used to being able to educate children that we normally would outplace, but the state is gonna say you can't do that anymore. So we have to be prepared for all that.
Yeah, one, one last thing. I wanna, they also, um, and it's, like I said, this is political type stuff, but what they were also speaking about is it's going to come back around for, and Dr. Jackson brought this to our attention a while back, when the people were talking about school choice and charter schools in the area. That's going to be, you know, coming down the pipe as well. And just so everybody in the community understands, you know, when you talk about school choice and charter schooling, let's say somebody gets a, a voucher to send their child to another school, you know, that's taking money out of your local coffers so that, you know, people can get that choice to go somewhere else. And that would affect Lindop's budget as well in the future. Quite possible. But that's just one of the things that they were saying could be coming down the pipe.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And anything else for any other board members? All right, that concludes my report. Superintendent, take it away.
All right, thank you very much. Um, and so traditionally I had every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation. And every city or house divided against itself shall not stand. This will be the last time I say that, because I think it was more of a how-to than a not-to. And so the new title will be no weapon formed. And that is for all of us. Uh, to talk about the education budgets, it's interesting, because I've been talking to the Chief of Staff at the Illinois State Board of Education and, uh, keeping up with that legislation. Fortunately, we have a governor who will not bow down and who is not going to stop and who will fight for education in Illinois. And that is something that we need. Um, we also have a very strong superintendent commission. Um, it is normally out in the south, in the suburban area. However, there are superintendents from all over who are coming together to get that done. Uh, I was talking to Mrs. Graham earlier and she had seen something on where the president is now also uh, going against Harvard and Harvard is standing and saying, we will not stop. Children are important and this is what we are going to do. And so it's good to know that Illinois is one of, in the forefront and doing that, and our legislators are working very diligently to make sure that Illinois is not impacted. We don't know how. It may be impacted, but they are fighting for us and superintendents are right there on the forefront with them. Okay, Board Goal Two, Facilities, Meetings with Archon. Uh, so in my absence, you all have been hearing a lot about the library and a renovish, renovation of it and the reimagining of the library. Um, had a meeting with Archon maybe a few weeks ago and, uh, the library, uh, the work will begin. The bid notice has gone out. Uh, Mrs. Gibson, thank you so much for making sure that that was published in the newspapers, not only in the Sun-Times, but also in the Tribune, but not only in the Tribune, also in the Village Free Press. So there are opportunities for black and brown contractors to have access, um, to this business. Now, the date, uh, that they are thinking that they will finish everything will be in October. However, we've been planning, we've met, this will not disrupt instruction. It will not disrupt the opening, um, of school. So we're very excited about that and also very excited about our new library. All right, Board Goal Five, Community District Relations, Regional Spelling Bee. I'm not sure if, um, everyone knows, and since we do have an audience here tonight, I will just say that Lindop is the first African-American school to ever host the regional spelling bee. It was held for probably over twenty years, um, at another school. Uh, but Lindop is the first African-American school to, um, host it. And our goal now, and I've been speaking to, um, a, a parent whose child is just very eager, but also getting them some help so that we can have coaches, because we know those people who win, they don't start right before the spelling bee. They start right after they're done to get ready to compete for the next one. And we wanna make sure, uh, that our babies have that same opportunity. Career Day at Lindop. Okay, so this was a new twist, uh, with our career day. We had Lindop alumni here and to talk about their experiences while at Lindop, so they were going through and looking at all of the pictures. Um, we had our very own, uh, from here, Ms. Janine Edwards. We had Ms. Taisha Tanksley, who was a kindergarten teacher. Um, Mrs. Edward, Mr. Taylor, our board member, he also attended Lindop. We have Brandon Johnson, who works over at the Park District and just goes on and on and on. And, um, it was, um, amazing just to hear the things that they're doing and for them to be so willing to come back. Next year, uh, we're going to expand it and, uh, do some career assessment profiles and making sure that our babies are, are able to see people who look like them, but also are doing some things exciting and careers that they want to pursue, um, further. So very excited about that and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee Reports, Personnel Committee Meeting, myself, Ms. Griffin, that next meeting date is to be determined. Finance Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, myself, that next meeting date is to be determined. PACE Governing Board, Mr. Dawson, Mr. Morris. A meeting was held on Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five at six PM. That next meeting date is tomorrow, Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five at six PM. Mr. Dawson?
Uh, the new thing at PACE is they, we just authorized the purchase of a new software called Infinitec Software. And what's great about it is it's not only gonna be for PACE, they're going to give it out to all of the member districts. And the software specifically helps parents, you know, as well as teachers, but it's also something that, uh, parents can use as a tool where it gives them, I hate to say professional development, but when it comes to dealing with children who are having emotional breakdowns and problems, a lot of times, parents don't know kind of where to begin, where to start. And the same software that they're gonna use at the schools to deal with children who have special needs, they're going to allocate this and give this out to the school districts, uh, that are members, including Lindop, where, um, parents will have a login, where they can go on and say, you know, my child is having a meltdown or I'm having difficulty getting them to eat certain foods and dealing with certain textures and things like that, where other than that, they were just trying to Google it on their own, but this type of software, I think, is gonna be really beneficial to, especially children, uh, parents of young children who, you know, sometimes they don't know where to turn, even if their children don't have an outplacement. These are general air kids who sometimes are dealing with a lot. And I'm looking forward to that, cause I, I think that, that's gonna be really beneficial to parents who need that kind of resource. So, uh, there'll be more forthcoming, but like, we just bought it, so, you know, I don't know too much about it yet. But that's it. Meeting's tomorrow and I'll, I'll learn more.
Thank you, sir. Safety, SEL Committee Meeting, that's Mr. Morris, Mr. Buchanan. Next meeting date is to be determined. Policy Committee Meeting, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Williams-Wolfe. Next meeting date is to be determined. Para-CIA Committee Meeting, Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris, Mr. Dawson. Next meeting date is to be determined. Technology Committee Meeting, Mr. Dawson, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Buchanan, Mr. Morris. Next meeting date is to be determined. Strategic Planning Committee Meeting, all board members, that's ad hoc, activated when needed. Community Engagement Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Buchanan. Next meeting date is to be determined. And the Negotiations Committee Meeting.
We have an update. So we have an update and this was, we got these dates after, um, the, the agenda had been posted. But the dates for, uh, negotiations for the LSSA contract, May sixth, seventh, May twelfth and May fourteenth, four PM to five-thirty PM.
Six, seventh?
Twelfth and the fourteenth, yes.
Thank you. And the Negotiations Committee Meeting, again, LSSA Contract, sixth, seventh, twelfth and fourteenth. Thank you. Next, I move that the board going to close session under five, I O C S one twenty dash two, C one, four, eight and nine, and ten, to discuss appointment and employment compensation, discipline or performance of specific employees of the public body, evidence or testimony presented in open hearing or enclosed hearing, where susp- suspifically authorized by law, security procedures, school building, safety and security, student disciplinary cases and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students at six fifty, six PM. Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah.
Board Member, Ms. Williams-Wolfe? Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Thank you. Motion carries. You all have a wonderful evening. The time of the time now is nine oh six PM. We are reconvening in open session. We need roll call.
You could do like a voice vote, too. I'll come back and roll.
So no roll call? No roll call.
No roll call, just reconvene at nine oh six PM.
Yeah, uh, President Hannah's here. Also, we have?
No, you don't have to say who we will be in open session. In open session, you have to say who you are.
No, no, you could, I said you could do a voice vote to come back, to resume open session, like all in favor, I, all.
Okay, cool.
So, all in favor?
All right, all right. There we go. All right, so here we go. Uh, this one. Okay. Motion to approve approve a one-time performance bonus for, I don't wanna mess her name up.
Sign you?
Sign you?
Sign you?
Yeah, sign you, obasi, in the amount of three thousand dollars. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any just say?
Miss Pay, or Mrs. Williams-Wolfe, second?
Yes. There are none. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfe?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr.?
Absent.
Absent, okay?
Motion carries. Motion to approve a one-time performance bonus for Ms. Tamara Whitfield Graham in the amount of three thousand dollars. Can I have a second, please?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Brian Dawson?
Who's second?
Brian Dawson.
Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfe?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent. Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Thank you. Motion carries. Motion to approve a one-time performance bonus for Mrs. Emily Erickson-Pence in the amount of three thousand dollars. Can I have a second, please?
Board Member, Brian Dawson, second.
Discussion, there are none. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wilford, no. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent. Mr. Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
So, should we redo, do we need to redo it?
Okay, hold on, hold on, we can go back. 'Cause I wanna make sure the record is correct. So, very good catch. Let's go back. I was number two. So, for the record, um, what, what did we do? Strike the motion? Do we redo it?
No, you can just correct it, so.
And say, he will have said, correct?
The Board Member Griffin, Griffin's vote on the motion regarding Mr. Graham.
Let me make sure I had.
As an abstain, but you can recall the vote just to make sure you get it out.
Okay, and that's our attorney.
Todd Hayden.
Attorney Todd Hayden. We're gonna redo the motion.
So, do you allow me to redo all of them?
Just Ms. Whitfield.
I make a motion to approve a one-time performance bonus for Ms. Tamara Whitfield Graham in the amount of three thousand dollars. Can I have a second, please? Second, Brian Dawson. Roll call, please.
Board, um, President, Mr. Hannah. Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin. Board Member, Mr. Taylor. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wilford. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent. Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent. Thank you.
Time is now nine eleven. Oh, we got some other? The time is nine eleven. I move that we adjourn open session. All in favor, say.
Okay, no.
I didn't say it. Second, Brian Dawson.
All in favor.